So the June 9th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen will come to order. This is our first meeting back in person and it's so exciting to have people here. And so we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
So we're really excited to start our first meeting back with a commendation to FabNet Machine Company. So if the whole family wants to come down, apparently the price is right. We adhere by law to all that the Board of Selectmen offers their serious, his dearest congratulations to FabNet Machine Company in recognition of their 100th year as a fourth generation, family-owned and operated business located in Pawtucket, Connecticut, providing machining, welding, and design, as well as steel welding supplies and industrial gadgets. Congratulations on this amazing milestone and best wishes on your next 100 years. So this is for you guys. Thank you. We're recording it, so.
He wants to pop into the, he's not on the, I mean if he has anything.
We've been at the same location for, for 100 years, on Chase Street, that is. And we thank the town very much. They've been very good to us and we've enjoyed being there.
We've enjoyed being there, but we've also been provided the opportunity to be there by the support from our local community.
Very well called in another 100 years. Smile up, ready? Smile up your mouth. There we go. One, two, three. Um, nice. Beautiful. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you for having me, Jason, and Susan, Alex, and your thankful friends.
Well, it's my pleasure.
So they've talked a lot.
You're welcome. Take care. Have a great night, of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so now we're going to start our public hearing part of the meeting on the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Application. So we will now call the public hearing portion to order. So it's my understanding that we've received two applications for the 2021 and a program from the Learn Project and the Stone City Community Center. Mr. Sullivan, would you like to give an overview of the program?
Yeah, the Neighborhood Assistance Act, what that is, it's a system whereas through state tax credits, local nonprofits can solicit donations from local for-profit companies. And depending on what the program, how that money was programmed, the company that gives the donation is eligible for anywhere from either 60% or 100% tax credit when they file their state corporate income taxes. So that's how it works. The town is really just a liaison between the state and the nonprofits and their donors. It's really, it's not town-funded, it's all funded through state tax credits. So we just facilitate it, we try to put everybody together. But ultimately, it's up to the nonprofits who want to solicit, you know, the donation from the local businesses. The Como, you're familiar with what they do, they do so much for the town. They're, they're sort of, they're looking for donations to continue their energy efficiencies, improvements to their facilities. That happens to be a 60% tax credit for whatever they get. The donating corporation will take a 60% tax credit. And the Learn organization, they work with all local school districts along the shoreline in Southeast area Connecticut. They're partnering with Goodwin College. It's almost like a prep school program for low-income students who would otherwise struggle in college. In cooperation with Goodwin, they teach them how to be better students before they go on to their, their college careers. So hopefully they'll be more successful. In this instance, that, that type of program would qualify for 100% credit for whatever donation they receive. Just looking, I just did a review of last year's. Last year, the Como received $23,000 in donations from Jewish Savings Bank and EverSource. Unfortunately, Learn didn't receive anything from any local businesses last year, so I don't think they were able to benefit from the credit, but they're going to try it again. So that's, that's in a nutshell, that's any specific questions.
I think we don't have anyone from the Como or Learn, so.
No, I'm surprised. Fabine's usually here, but.
And we didn't receive any written communication for or against the program or the applicant, so if anyone here wants to speak about it. But if not, do you have any questions for John?
No, I think it's a great opportunity. I mean, it's a great opportunity to form partnerships, so. I'm glad to see the Como was successful last year and hopefully they both will be successful.
This is their, their third or fourth year, I think. They got a, like a four-year program to, I think, to improve this. And I think they'll want another year after this and that's to complete at least. This, this probably what they're trying to accomplish.
You know, I mean, I hear tax credit instead of tax deduction, so it's really valuable for the corporations who donate, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good program.
All right, so hearing of our comments, the public hearing portion is closed. Now, well, could I get a motion to approve the 2021 Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Application from the Stone City Community Center and the Learn Project?
So moved.
Your second.
My second.
A motion, second. Any further discussion? No? Hope it goes, hope it goes, so. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carried. Could I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 12th, 2021?
So moved.
Right, your second.
My second.
And any discussion?
No.
Thank you. Forget to take these, of course.
Yes.
Which are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carried. So I also get a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of May 27th, 2021.
So moved. My second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
No.
Another, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. So under correspondence, we received an application from James Pelcarini, who's interested in serving on the WPCA. Just a reminder, he had off, he had applied when there was a previous opening when we then appointed Charles Sheen. So we'll be talking with him and touching base again, but for this part, we'll just enter into the correspondence and then hopefully get to speak with him and see if, hopefully he's still interested. And under appointment, we need to add another appointment to the agenda for your consideration. So could I, at this point, just get a motion to add the item of an appointment to the Stone City Harbor Management Commission to the agenda?
So moved.
Your second?
My second.
Any discussion on that one?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carried. So this is an appointment for the Stone City Harbor Management Commission to appoint Elizabeth Gimple to the Stone City Harbor Management Commission. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
My second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
No. Thank, thank Tori for, she's willing to do this.
Yes, no, it's good. And I know she spoke at the chair and he's been supportive of us also, so.
And she has experience, I mean, she has experience, so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And supportive of it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carried. The next one is a motion. We, our last meeting had discussions and interviews with two really wonderful candidates for the Economic Development Commission. And at this point, I would like to request a motion to appoint Elsie Bissette to the Economic Development Commission.
So moved.
Your second?
My second.
Motion, and a second. Now, discussion, I'd love to hear from you guys, what you think.
No, I was very, very impressed with Elsie, with yours, with your past experience, and I think it'll fit in well. I think the applicant, I'm so pleased that he came forward and I'm hoping that he'll still stay involved.
I did, I did speak with him briefly just before the meeting, just to let him know the direction I thought this might go. And he, he was going to stay engaged and involved and maybe even talk about planning and zoning or other boards and commissions. And I know Dave Hammond's also letting people know that, maybe there's people who've been on there a long time and if they're ready to go on to something else, that we have another great candidate, I think, but.
But yeah, I think Elsie has so much experience, she can offer so much, you know, without the burning curve, you know, they hit the ground, sweet.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. You were also my first choice as well. I mean, Robert Jones was awesome. I really, I love that people want to give back and that was one of the things that he really wants to give back. And he is an Air Force veteran, so I really want him to, you know, look at other opportunities. But, but when you were giving us a list of your, and that was the virtual meeting, or it was on the phone, right, it was a conference call. You were giving us a list of your past experiences. Although there were a lot of raised eyebrows or should have, I agree, because we didn't discuss it, but you know, we were like, wow, yes, okay. So you are, you would be an excellent addition to the Economic Development Commission and is, you know, and I can see you in the leadership role. So yes, pick the ground speeding, not just running. So thank you very much for your willingness to do this, but she was my first choice also.
Yes, thank you so much, Elsie. It's going to be really exciting to see all the things you can hope accomplish with that group. So thank you for coming. So we have the motion, the second, we have the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. And you're of course welcome to stay, but you also don't have to. So the next one is, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Gary Belty to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a culture net.
So moved. My, my second.
Thank you. Motion, second. So discussion?
No, I spoke with Gary and I know that he's been interviewed and spoken with the rest of them and, you know, I think, I think he'll be a good addition to the agency. I appreciate, he is also relative, not friend, into town, but new and interested in getting involved. Yes, I spoke with him also and I know that he's spoken with the chair and the chair supports him being appointed. And while I, while I, while he has some land use experience, what he has more of is a desire to give back to the town and men of time that's involved, because planning and zoning can take a fair amount of time. It's not just the meetings, but it's reviewing the applications and reviewing the zoning regulations while our planning department does a fantastic job of summarizing all of the applications and, you know, pitfalls and, you know, other things to consider for all the commission members. And the fact that he is, would like to do that, I think is awesome, so.
Yeah, I agree too. And I think, you know, this one came up more unexpected and we know we have two more coming in August. So I think this was great and this was the only applicant we, we got. So I think it was fine to each of us talk individually to Gary. And yeah, I agree, he seemed like he was really, he very carefully considered this.
Yes.
He seemed like he knows what he's going to do and he's willing to serve.
I agree.
So I'm hopeful. All right, so we have the motion and the second and the discussion. Any further discussion?
No.
No? Aye. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carried. And thank you to Elsie and Gary and all of this and make those all people. So we also are going to accept the resignation of Peter Balaschashi. He informed us that he plans to resign from the WPCA once a replacement can be appointed. So we'll send him an address and thank him for his tremendous service on the WPCA.
So he's going to stay on, so what, I mean, we'll accept his resignation pending a replacement?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And then we have Jane likely interested in stepping in.
Exactly, okay.
And he's already been interviewed, but we'll reach out again.
Okay.
So we have no old business. So under new business, another discussion to award of a bid for full-depth patch contract. And Tom is gracious enough to come, so thank you, Tom. So.
Second string market application.
The Department of Public Works received four bids for on-call full-depth pavement repair and Public Works has reviewed the bids, referenced them, and all other associated documents and are requesting an award of bid to Ed French and Son. And then Tom, do you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I would add that these are typically places in various locations of the town that are a little bit bigger than we can handle in-house, but we don't put them in the CIP because they're not large enough to do it that way. So the funding comes out of our operations budget, which would be normally under $100,000 per year for handling part of the contract. And anything over that would go to the CIP projects. We've used French before, Ed French and Sons, they're somewhat of a local contractor located in West Lee, Rhode Island, and we've had a great success with them. They're timely, they're neat clean, they do job properly, and they provide the materials that the contract calls for, which is the right kind of processed gravel. We never really have to do too much of an inspection. If it's two inches on top of two inches of asphalt, that's what they put in. And I think that's about it for the contract. It's, there's two quantities in here. There's a quantity for the bid and I think what we were asking for in the, in the order of the bid is to be able to use the pricing. So if it's under 1,000 square feet, it would be $6 per square foot. And if it's over that, it's five. And typically it's over that. So we're small, we've got to take care of ourselves. But we don't have a real power paper, so we don't take it under the bill.
Yeah, I guess that's a good question. So it's full depth pavement patch, what does that mean?
That means they come in, they come with their own machinery, their own trucks, everything. They excavate, whether it's a 1,000 square foot spot, they excavate the asphalt out of the place. And if any processed gravel is required, they touch it over with that and then they put in two layers of asphalt, typically two inches on top of two inches.
Okay, so it's just, the difference is not, they're not just filling a pond?
Right, yes, right. It's actually, it's almost becomes a reconstruction, but it's only portions of the road. Like North Stone City Road, for example, we did some of those last year in 2004. And we have to just pick the worst spots. So we kind of do it as an immediate, immediate action that has to happen, we go and do it there. And we keep a running list, like this year we're going to try to do Summit Street. And this thing I know has some spots. East Enterprise Avenue, Buck, that Watchell Avenue, over at Valph Avenue. And these are spots, we know they probably don't do as much traffic as some of the other places, so we know we can do a patch for now, let's call it that, you know, a full-depth replacement. And then when we get around to it, it comes off the pavement management program, we can take the road on and do some tiring.
Thank you.
So that's what it is.
So could I get a motion to award the bid for on-call full-depth pavement to Ed French and Son?
So moved.
Your second?
My second.
Motion, second. Any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, so, so the, all these bids that are attached, so how many, like, how, how many feet of road could they potentially repair?
Well.
I don't know if you have that, and if you don't have that figured out, that's okay.
Like a linear foot kind of thing? Average road width is two lanes that are, let's say, 12 feet, 20 gallons, or 12, 25 feet. And they would maybe do as far as 100 feet, 150 feet at a section. It wouldn't be more than a couple hundred feet.
Okay.
We wouldn't do any more than that. Because if you start chopping up roads in that place, well, two things. The residents become upset because they're like, why didn't you pave the whole road? And then sadly, we don't feel like it's the best way to spend the money. If we're going to do that, then we're going to either mill the roads like we typically do now and resurface them or do a complete reclamation or reconstruct some of those.
Okay, but these are substantial patches, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, substantial. That's why we don't do them in-house.
Okay.
If it's utility trenches on some of the side roads, maybe on the main roads, we can do those in-house without a problem. Because the larger it gets, we need bigger equipment and trucks that can haul the material, which they use trucks, so that's a couple, let's say, 22 to 25 ton of asphalt. But we have trucks that can one foot nine.
Okay, okay, that's, that's it.
Aye, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
And you're also local stakeholder, you're also. So the next one is a request for, we received a request for the use of the parking lot at 49 North Stone City Road for the Wood and Boat Show. Because it'll be back this year for August 18th to the 22nd. Could I get a motion to approve the use of the parking lot at 49 North Stone City Road for the Wood and Boat Show from August 18th to the 22nd, 2021?
So moved. My second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
This is the same thing we have seen in the past.
Yes, same, yes.
So will the Osprey be affected?
Yeah, I saw the email about the Osprey.
Yeah, so there was a question, I think maybe late, late enough in the season that they'll be all right. But it's something that we've done before?
Yeah, every, for years.
Okay.
For years, yeah.
All right, all right. I don't think we need to have any special signage or anything, so.
Yeah, I think they're usually very respectful of the lot. And it's a free usage, so hopefully.
Okay.
Motion, second. Any further discussion?
No.
No? All those in favor? Aye, the motion carried. All right, the next item on the agenda is comments from the public.
So, street, do we have a street number?
Oh, yeah, it's on there.
Do you take that out or?
No, it's, it's not on your page.
I'll get it. Okay. Okay, the next one is a street number assignment.
Hang on, I'll tell you, Daniel.
Could I, let's see.
It's, you're going to do, the motion is for street number for map 16, block four, lot 20, for 175 Liberty Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut.
So could I get a motion to, to change street number for map 16, block four, lot 22, to 175 Liberty Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, 06379?
So moved.
Your second?
My second.
So a second. Any discussion?
No.
Thank you for noticing that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carried. Thank you. Now, comments on the public. It's a lot of really, thank you, we're excited. Any questions?
Welcome back.
Yeah, welcome back. Thanks for coming. Are you comments from the selectmen? Deb, do you want to start?
Just a quick comment. I had a really exciting night. I attended a Connecticut Environmental Forum meeting where the discussion was climate, residency, and vulnerability, and the state spoke in Yukon. But there was also a representative from Branford, from the Coastal Vulnerability Working Group, and he gave a short presentation and I was so fascinated. I called him later and I talked to him for a good hour at least. And he's willing to talk to us again and he really gave me kind of the nuts and bolts about how that working group was set up. It was, they also have selectmen, it was appointed by the selectmen. Kind of what they did and what they're doing. And they're doing some real concrete, you know, local, collecting local data, working on plans, trying to create things that are useful for both the town and they're, they're thinking in terms of a 50-year planning process. And for residents, so if residents have questions like, should I build this addition? And things like that. And they're not trying to like, you know, they're, they're trying to change behavior going forward, is basically what he was saying. And, you know, and I can say, we've taped up a bunch of notes from talking to him, but, you know, they started with things similar to what we have because they had a coastal resiliency study done for the town. They had their plan of conservation and development that the people had, the residents had identified this was a concern to them, the vulnerability of Branford was very hard by Sandy and I reading the storms. They also had their hazard mitigation plan and they have a regional hazard mitigation plan. So they started with those and have been building on that. And each one, you know, we've been looking at, do we accommodate, do we adapt, or do we avoid? And they're really looking at, can we change behavior? They're also looking at the FEMA maps and elevations and they're trying to change, you know, they're working similar to what we'll be doing, looking at zoning regs and also building permits to try to think proactively towards the future. Whereas you're not going back to somebody and saying, okay, you got to take this down, but it's more, hey, let's look at this in the future if you build this addition in an area that's flooded already two times. So, I mean, he's willing to talk to us further, but I was just so impressed by some of the work that they're doing. So that, is that, so what is, what is the name of their group? What's the name of it? So it's called the Coastal, I actually also got off their website, the Coastal Vulnerability Ad hoc Working Group.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Do they have a climate change task force or is this kind of their?
No. Well, in a sense, but they also have a clean energy working group, so they have.
Subset.
Subset. And this working group, he said, they have different subcommittees on there of like communication, data, legal, and zoning. They've kind of, you know, split up to do that. I did notice on their website, they have this clean energy working group and they're looking at, you know, some of the things that our climate change task force is looking at. So this really ties into with kind of what, and I know it's not a working group, it's, it's more town employs the infrastructure group. Like it ties into, you know, it brings in several different things. It sounds like it's, it just sounds like if there's more success. I can think of the right, the right terminology, but because they have all, everyone's bought, everyone's bought into it and the process and the communication and the path forward, so maybe it's a model we can take a look. Well, that's what I thought and he's certainly willing to, he's an LADY and it's actually somebody I worked with years ago, so it was so interesting to talk to him again. And he's a good friend of Chuck Sheen, some port. And so he is more than happy to talk with us further or, you know, put us more in touch with people and forever. Because I thought, what a great model, you know, and they've been successful and they're working on it now and. As I said, I was really inspired. He's like, oh, I was thinking, I wondered if anybody would get anything out of my presentation. And I was like, oh my goodness, that to me, you know, was just a night that I took with me and followed upon, so.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, let's follow up. I mean, you set up a, we could come and talk or meet or.
Yeah.
Yeah, connect through, work a little bit, but yeah.
For the climate change task force, right. Yeah, because I thought, you know, even if they're doing some different things, it certainly is a model, you know, we can work on and see how we get forward, so. I'm very excited. Yeah, because, you know, and I don't really have too many updates because I, I, you know, what was. But a couple of the other commissioners, I was only able to talk to the chairman, I wasn't with the chief, but. Yes, a couple things. So Commission on Aging, we met last week. And, and I also attended a couple of weeks, weekends prior, the Mystic Geriatric Institute.
Yeah.
All right, so, and I'm going, and I'm going to continue to attend that. So it's, it's interesting because nobody on the Commission on Aging had ever heard of them. And the Mystic Geriatric Institute really didn't know that we had an aging commission in town. I think the focus, the focus of the two organizations is a little different, where the Commission on Aging is really focusing on the seniors and the Mystic Geriatric Institute focuses on like senior legislation and also focusing on the caregivers. So, I mean, I see it as a great collaboration, so anyway, I'm going to continue on with attending their, their meetings. And it's, they're Saturday mornings and I think the next one will be in person. But it was just interesting that the Commission on Aging didn't know, they hadn't heard of them. And there was, there was a person on the Commission on Aging that also would like to attend the Mystic Geriatric Institute meetings as well, so.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, so, so that's the Commission on Aging. Planning and zoning did pass a, a solar field regulation where, so people can have standing on solar fields. Right now, our regulation is for solar panels, is that you can only have panels on your roof or south of your home, where there's many places where if they could put a solar field, and not everybody has, you know, south-facing roof or, or land south of their home to be able to put a solar field. So, so, so they passed the regulation, I think it goes into effect June 21st or June, I think next week or the week after, it actually goes into effect. So there was a, you know, a fair amount of discussion over two meetings, but it got passed. So it'll really help people who want to have a small solar array in their backyard or their side area, it has to stay within the step acts. And there's a maximum size of 2,000 square feet, which is actually fairly large. You can make a dinner lot, a kilo lots with that, so. But I think there's, I think they have, I think there's a caveat in the regulation too that requires like the consumption, so, so people can't just start building solar arrays and like sell that electricity back, so it has to be really for personal use.
Okay, okay.
So, anyway, that's very exciting because our current solar regulations go back to the 1980s. The Police Commission, there, we, we at one point in time in the past year, we were down five officers in town and we're only down one now. I think we're stealing officers from other places because a lot of them are already, you know, have already gone through the academies, so, so, I mean, that's really, that's really good for us, especially with summer coming and all events coming back and tours coming back, so, so that's pretty good. The Recreation Commission, so I got an update on the football field, right? Because now they're being on the board. Because now they're being on the board, when it's on the board of finance, we're putting money aside for the football field every year to replace the turf for the football field. I talked with Peter Anderson, and they said that they reflopped up the football field last November, which is quite a process, and they ran magnets over it to get rid of any, you know, little mag, you know, metal shavings or whatever this thing is field. The field's in really good shape for at least another three to five years, he thinks. And as long as they keep up this, you know, this fluffing up process and whatnot, so it could help with the impact. And the track though, around the field's going to have to be replaced before the field is out, but. And the gyms, as soon as the schools open and the gyms are available to the public, I know the recognition would really like to have access to the gyms, they don't have that now, but in time. Fingers crossed, so.
Guys, I think that's it.
I've got a couple of things that I was going to actually mention.
Did they mention to me about the disc golf that I'm using in the area?
Disc golf.
Disc golf? Well, I know Tom and DPW, they cleared out some trails, like behind Spelman, to do a new rep program of like disc golf.
Yeah, it's like a little pilot program, they're scouting with three holes, but they also go to nine, and then eventually like a full golf course and then two holes.
Yeah, it was a really nice partnership between DPW went out and did it, spent extra time and went and cleared some areas so that they could be out in the fields. And Treeward and Mack went out and gave approval for what could, if it happened back there.
Okay.
It's like extended potential.
So I just, I forgot, because I got so carried away on my thing that I didn't. Let's talk about a couple of things. One was, I did want to say on Mystic, we're going to have a park for anyone who's following that, we are still waiting for the state's response to our grant for that and our grant for Stonehenge. No, we have not yet heard from the state. They did contact the town with questions, but still no response. So we still don't know if we're getting money on either of those projects. And then I wanted to mention a couple of other things. One, June and I went to the Seaport to meet with them, and we talked about possible partnerships, you know, between the town and the Seaport, how they might be able to help us. And interesting, what they mentioned was like meeting rooms or things like that, and so I think that's something.
So it was a social event, let's make sure it was a social.
Yeah, it's a social event, yes.
There was a social event where the Seaport invited community leaders to it. So it was us and some people from the Nature Center and the Como and, you know, other.
Yeah, the bank, there were a number of different.
Yeah, a number of different organizations, so just to meet the new CEO and new staff, and. It was outside, it was very nice.
So they were offering up some.
They're looking for opportunities to partner with different groups in the town, so.
Yeah, okay, well, good.
And it's a really cool new exhibit.
Yeah.
If we had a chance to see a preview of it.
Oh, the exhibit?
Yes, yes.
Yes, really exciting.
Yeah, I saw it, it was a May thing, so.
Yes.
We went for a decoration thing, and so Peter and I were trying to give a little May tours, very nice. But that's really, that's good, reminding me of the good update.
And my last thing is, just because I had a question from some people, and I know we're starting the new zoning reg process, they wonder about how public participation will happen. And these are people, because it made me think of it with the solar farms. These are people who are concerned about solar farms on scenic roads, and is there a wage or request some kind of, you know, a barrier or something?
No, that's a big, I know our, both town planner and director of economic, between developments, so he's, are working together to put out an RFP, so to see what kind of people, consultants, we potentially get back for the process.
Of the zoning regulations?
So I think once that person's in, then we can talk more with them about how usual. I think my basic understanding from Keith and Sue is like, they look through, it's probably like we go through a process, they kind of look through different things, have a community conversation, also get initial input on like where does the community feel like things are outdated or need improvements or changes.
Noise is another thing.
Yeah, the different, you know, aspects of where the focus should be, and then they'll kind of work on it. And then they said, I think different towns, we probably see the Seaport and we have, do it differently, but like they could do it by like section or theme, or each meeting can be a few updates at a time, where they could kind of wait till the end. But obviously, anything that goes through a change would have a, that's substantial, and, you know, have a chance for public comment and hearing, but, yeah. So we'll see, I think once we get the person, we'll see, we do anything, we want to include in there, we'll see, we get them, somebody who might have some experience with like coastal resiliency and looking at that.
I think that's a big, good point for that. Because I did think with the resident too about the noise issue, and that was a suggestion on their part to say maybe that could be part of the new zoning update as well.
Yes, but, you know, you're, 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 three-wheelers can't be within a setback. In fact, that has to be like two times the setbacks for, so.
You know, and again, but that would be something like that. Be great with the public participation, so we can hear these different ideas.
Yeah, I'm sure there's something to think about. Given time, I'll be brief, but you made me think of it. So we, a group of students from Yukon have worked on kind of a renewable energy kind of time, mostly looking at solar and geothermal, for more like what can residents do? But they want, they want, they offered to do a little kind of public community dialogue. And I was good, I wasn't sure if it was an overreach, but I wanted to reach out to the Seaport, ask them if they might host it, so now you may feel empowered to at least ask sometime this summer, like an evening, and invite people to come and kind of be part of that discussion. And doing kind of change task force has suggested we also reach out to the Green Bank, which I tried to do, but I haven't had any success yet. So if anybody goes any contact, or I'll let Rick know, I haven't had any success reaching anyone. But just to bring a contact, and then we could also invite them to this event to also potentially speak about some of the work happening at the state level and options for residents as well as businesses to take advantage of some of the work that they're doing on renewable energy options. So that was really nice of them, that was exciting. I think things are progressing along nicely, we had an update on Al Harvey. It's still very much just in like Trust Republic land, doing a lot of work behind the scenes. But we have been called to the members from Avalonia, and then also U.S. Fish and Wildlife at a different time. And everybody's still kind of progressing positively and trying to work towards doing, working with a neighbor who has probably purchasing part of, they have a right first refusal for his parcel of land, so they'll probably, they're working on that, and then drawing the boundaries, and then they'll have the official survey or go out. And then once all that's done, then U.S. Fish and Wildlife can request the money for their portion that they feel is something positive, that they'll be able to get the money because another project fell through for them, which is sad, but personally. That for whoever that was, but good for us. So it's looking, that's a real, that's a project that we had. So it's, that's promising, and we did our last COVID update last week, hopefully. But that was, it was just a bitter sweet moment, but we probably, we were down to only sixteen cases, it was going to be four, it was ten maybe, and we obviously have been hundreds each time. So we felt like we're down low enough that, you know, we won't keep doing the every week updates. And I'm sort of not sure how many people actually even like to them, but we did them every week. So we'll stop doing that, so that was kind of, I feel like a milestone that we reached. We'll probably still do occasional things about vaccines, because we still like to do those numbers a lot more. I know that Aquarium hosted a mobile vaccine. I don't know if it was just this past weekend, but hopefully they'll do that more, and they're looking for other, the state is looking for other recommendations on offense or locations where a lot of people will be, and they'll put these kind of mobile vaccine clinics there. So it was really nice of the Seaport to do that. The, we also have a dedicated webpage now to the Veterans Monument effort. So you can help us share that, or anybody who has any interest in sharing that. So on it, we have an Excel with about seven thousand items, based on the tax successor list which we all push you. We know we're missing probably a lot of people. And we did agree with the kind of informal ad hoc group we pulled together that we have an opportunity to be really inclusive, and so we want to do that. So it's really anyone who served in any capacity, who's called Stonehenge Home, and they welcome to provide new evidence. Somebody in community services has agreed to kind of keep this on and help partners. That's through the dedicated email setup for it, so if you can email that email address and if they have questions, or if they want to say, we think my mother, my grandfather, whoever is missing from this list, and they'll talk them through the process. So that's one thing we really want from people, is to look at the list, help share the list, you know, let us know who's missing. Former, he's been building, former chief, first again, has been really helpful, and he's already getting us names of people who are missing, so that's really nice. But the other part is fundraising, so we, Stacy's been doing an amazing job reaching out to everybody that she can think of, asking for kind of grants, she was going to find for different, potentially find for different grants from different businesses in town and organizations, but also some people have been just amazingly generous, and, you know, even just like ten dollars, and that was a lot for me, but I really want to get it. So there's been some really touching donations that have come in, that have been really amazing. But so everything from, you know, a few dollars, people who give up to, you know, we have broken down different amounts for recognition on the potential monument, so, yeah. Most people have other ideas or know of other organizations to reach out to, that's a good one.
We're going to be on the Veterans Hour radio show?
Yeah, Stacy decided to be on the Veterans Hour radio show, and also record a little snippet that will potentially replay for us, something we feel, too, it could be really, that's really nice of them. And then I think, I don't think we've had a meeting since we did it, I can't remember, but at least now it's public, but we launched the nine-one-one, two-one-one mental health campaign with United Way and the Police Commission, so that's been really exciting. United Way, I think, is right now signing a contract with Miranda Creative, who they already work with, and who's been doing all this pro bono for us for months. I should have brought the flyer, to, to launch this, hopefully about four months, we're thinking right now, campaign. The Eastern Connecticut Community Foundation has agreed to spend some money, hopefully using some American Rescue Plan money to augment that. And like we talked about, it'll be everything from like, if we can ever get a billboard space that are hooked up forever, but billboard space, to lawn signs, to mailers, to people's houses. It'll be in the tax slips, and also flyers. So the school has been really gracious, and we created a flyer, and they're going to print them for us and put them into a backpack to go before the end of the school year, which I'll, you know, check your students. But if you have other ideas, and I'll share the overview. But I think it's really, it's really potentially exciting, we're meeting with the PD in two weeks to go through baseline data of how we can track, like what initial calls are coming in through nine-one-one and how they code them, and then we can hopefully see over time, you know, keep tracking it for months even after the campaign doesn't change. Do they see a decrease in some of these types of calls? And is, and then two alone are doing the same thing on their side, do they see an increasing call? Hopefully it's successful, but we'll track it.
That's good.
Yeah, so I'm sure there's something other things, so we'll leave it for that part out. Anything else?